Both hearings are hereby closed. I'd now like to open our selectmen's meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, including Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Okay.[74.34][74.34](laughing) It's a good thing I'm getting out of here early. You gonna take the whole thing? (laughing)
I think we should have a bigger room. Everybody in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The first piece of the business is the appointments, and we have Milt, our health officer, to give several reports. Milt?
Thank you for the time. I have a family event I have to go to, so I'm gonna be leaving here a little bit early, so I asked to come up first, and I thank you for that accommodation. I have four sections of the health officer's report tonight. I'll go through this quickly. Back in April, I gave a report on what actions had been taken up to that point, and now these are the verifications that these things have been corrected. We had a bed bug infestation on a West Main Street location, that's been corrected. We had a sewer backup in two residences on Mans Hill, that's been corrected. Accumulated garbage and trash at an Oak Hill Avenue location, that's been corrected. Eye wash station installations at Daisy Bronson Middle School following the health officer's building inspection. The Department of Education asked me to inspect Daisy Bronson as a facility now in a different location. The last time it had been inspected was back when it was part of the other separate building. And there's a requirement that all science rooms, regardless of whether or not they have chemicals, have to have eye wash stations. So, the eye wash stations were installed, and I took pictures of those in July and sent them down to the state. Removal of a live animal lacking current veterinary physical exam documentation from the Daisy Bronson Middle School science room. Following the building inspection, we had for many years a rabbit that lived in one of the science rooms. The vaccination record was just somewhat out of date. The teacher does this every year, but she missed the date, so they had the animal checked, and the decision was to not put it back into the science room because of its age. And so, right now, they don't have a live animal in the science room. New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services certified a no further action on a South Street property. When I send out letters or notifications to people in violation, I send out three levels of letters. One's called a letter of concern and recommendation, which is the mildest one. Then there's a letter of deficiency, and then there's a notice of violation in order with specific dates for correction. So I've got a few listed here, and then I had some referrals to other agencies. There was an overfilled dumpster at a Main Street location. Building deterioration with exposed asbestos sighting on a Main Street location. Improper fuel usage in an outdoor wood-fired hydronic heater off of Cottage Street. They were burning garbage instead of what they're supposed to burn. Strewn rubbish at another Oak Hill Avenue property. Dilapidated abandoned properties at various locations in town. Enforcement actions pending consultation with legal counsel regarding RSA 155B enforcements and/or various fire code enforcements. One of our attorneys is coming up to visit with the fire chief and I, and perhaps the police chief, to discuss various buildings in town that are deserted, unoccupied, and abandoned. And they're starting to become dilapidated. You may all recognize one or two of these somewhere around town. We have five that we've got on the list. We would like her to walk us through the various steps if, in fact, we choose to take any one of these dwellings or begin the motion towards taking the properties, hopefully without ever getting the town into trouble in terms of doing that. So she's coming up Wednesday. We're gonna be taking a tour of these various locations, and then coming up with a set of criteria to follow. Overfilled dumpsters at a Union Street location. Dumpsters are becoming an issue, and I'll talk about it a little bit later in terms of the dumpster ordinance, in terms of bears. And I've picked up a lot of information in recent weeks regarding this whole bear issue that we have to talk about in September. Two referrals to the zoning officer, complaints received concerning a Badger Street and a South Street property. On one of these two streets, I had nine vehicles parked there. This is not a health officer issue, this is a zoning officer issue. Five of those vehicles did not have plates or registrations. One referral to Bureau of Adult and Elderly Services in response to a concerned police referral of self-neglect following a residential contact. Follow-up request from Department of Environmental Services regarding the status of a deficient septic system on a West Main Street property notified during the early winter of 2011. The owner of this building lives in Massachusetts, and the septic system seemed to be fine, but the building's deserted and vacant, and the back doors of this building were wide open and being held open by sticks. And so, I notified her that somebody had to come up and close those doors. Accumulation of excessive non-contained uncovered rubbish and garbage bags at a Main Street property. That's what I've submitted since April. Let me very quickly give you the notifications that have come in from the Department of Environmental Services. An overdue UST underground storage tank compliance inspection corrective action at a Main Street business. Request for groundwater quality assessment following a limited oil spill at a Meadow Street business. A red tag letter of a deficiency to a Main Street business. Request for a site investigation to a Main Street business. Initiation of a Phase 1 environmental assessment at a Riverside Drive business. Level 1 site investigation report deemed unacceptable with recommended addendums and a new reporting due date on a Union Street past business location. Annual sampling summary report and groundwater permit transfer application for a West Main Street site. Notification of soil remediation standard exceedance. There is no such word as exceedance, but it's on a state report, regarding a Cottage Street business, which means they've exceeded. They're in violation. And then finally, a UST closure report deemed unacceptable with recommended addendum and new reporting due date regarding an oil tank removal at a school street location. For those of you who have lived here many years, you know we have had gas stations located in various areas, and then they've closed, and they've pulled the tanks, and they've flattened the land, and a new business has moved in. A number of these requests are samplings that are continuing from when the gas stations were there and had been spills. So that's what most of these are about. Last section here, very quickly. New Hampshire Department of Human and Health Services, Health Alerts, or CDC Health Advisories. April 28th, car fentanyl in New Hampshire, this one we all know about, a synthetic opioid that is 100 times more potent than fentanyl and has been linked to at least three New Hampshire overdose deaths. That was as of April, we have had many more since then. June 1st, potential for falsely low blood level test results. This is a Magellan lead care analyzer that they sent out a cautionary statement on. On June 1st as well, emerging tick-borne diseases in New Hampshire. Black-legged ticks transmit four different infections. Lyme disease is number one. We have a few properties here in town that are abandoned, and they have tall grass, and I've sent out notices because tall grass generates tick activity along with mosquitoes. 16 mosquito-borne diseases in New Hampshire. This is the first notification for West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis. Cautionary things for all communities. We have a syphilis outbreak in New Hampshire. Forty-two cases of infectious syphilis were identified in New Hampshire from January through May. These are all downstate counties. 717, confirmed measles case traveled to New Hampshire in July 2017. I put this on our website for the health officers' section of the website. A person with confirmed measles traveled to Hampton Beach on July 9th and purchased food at four beachside establishments during a time when he or she was considered infectious. Incubation period after exposure to measles is typically 10 to 14 days, but can be as long as 21 days. This person was obviously during the incubation period before the symptoms became apparent. And the last thing is, we got another season preparation, an update on mosquitoes. Manchester has reported on its first mosquito survey that they've picked up two mosquitoes with West Nile virus. Last year, you may remember, and you probably don't because I didn't either, we didn't have a pickup of West Nile virus until late September. And that's all I have for a report. Any questions from the tour? If not, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to touch very quickly on the dumpster ordinance. Remember a year ago, I brought, or we brought forward this last spring, covering the large construction dumpsters because of the water accumulation, and after four days, you can have mosquitoes dropping millions of eggs in this water. Mr. Timmons, Andrew Timmons from the state, came forward to us at that meeting and recommended that we also consider bear-proofing dumpsters here in Littleton. I've been in discussions with representatives from Whitefield, from Bethlehem, and from where else did I talk? Bethlehem, Lincoln, and Whitefield are the three that have active policies in place. And as the health officer, I'm going to recommend in September that we bear-proof, that we consider adding to our current dumpster ordinance bear-proofing as well. We've got issues around costs, we've got issues around compliance, we've got issues around monitoring and surveillance, and we have issues around fines. And I'll bring this forward in the fall. I have to tell you that the lady in Lincoln that spoke to me for close to a half an hour, I asked her about compliance. They have to have bear-proof dumpsters, they have to have bear-proof individual trashcans. And she said it started to become compliant, or people began to adhere to it, when two things happened. One was, they started fining people for this. And number two, people were educated to the fact that bears that are fed by humans or get into human trash have to be put down by fishing game because they won't go back into the woods and eat. They will continue to come to those sites for... And that means mommies and cubs as well have to be put down. Once that became clear to the people in Lincoln, they began to adhere to this ordinance. So I'll bring this forward in September, and we'll deal with it. Thank you.
What else we got?
I have a dog ordinance. I'm gonna ask for us tonight to pass the dog ordinance with two minor changes from our meeting in June. It's on the second page, Section 4, municipal athletic fields. For those of you who don't know about this, we're going to restrict the specific playing areas within the athletic fields. We're gonna restrict dogs from going on those fields. We have people from this community, as well as from others, that come to our community with their dogs, and they use our athletic fields for pooping, and some of them don't try to pick it up. And even if you pick it up, if you've got a dog, you already know this, you don't always pick it all up. When I made the presentation back in June, we spoke to the issue of 1/3 of an ounce of canine feces can carry up to 23 million bacteria, many of which can make you sick. Our fields have been used. This request came in from the athletic director at Littleton High School, and so we moved on it, but then we had a little bit of a conflict with the current dog ordinance in town, and we worked it out. So the changes are these. In Section 4, any owner or person having custody of any dog shall not permit the dog, while under physical control or at large, to trespass or be, and here's where the new wording is, on the defined playing areas of any municipal athletic field. A person came to us after the meeting and said, "But I have a service dog, and I like to come to the games." So, the intention here is not to restrict people from bringing their animals to the parks, but just to keep them off the actual defined playing areas. And then on the second paragraph, any athletic fields as described in this section shall have signs conspicuously placed at each field. We have five locations in town, and we have either nine or 10 fields, depending on the count. We have one on Brickyard Road, which is a baseball field, I think. We have three at Remick Park, two are baseball fields, and one, I think, is a field hockey field. And I'm skipping the, I'm not including the pool here or the tennis court, but just the playing fields. Apthorpe Common, this is the Reddington Street, Carlton Street, Eli Street, has two. They have a baseball field, and I think they have a soccer field. Railroad Street has two fields, one baseball field, maybe two other fields, but there's at least one other big field there for either soccer or field hockey. And then Lakeway has a baseball field. So we have nine or 10 fields within five locations, and with these changes, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we move this warrant, or this, I'm sorry, this ordinance.
We will vote on this in board action after we've had public comment.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. And that's, oh, I have one more.
You're not done.
I have one more, I'm sorry. I'm back as being selectman. Oh, I forgot. Here's how the dog ordinance is gonna look. The top part is clearly the message. This part here will change because we're looking at a trespass notice with the actual ordinance wording here. But it'll be this size, this is actually, it's a little bit bigger than what it actually is gonna be on, be on one of these. And we'll have these placed in various locations around the playing fields. The issue here is clearly, again, to keep it safe for our kids to be able to play without having to spend 20 or 30 minutes picking this stuff up before the games. My last item here is, in the issue of Town and City, that we receive as selectmen and the town officers get to it as well, there was an article on cybersecurity in municipal governments. And in the article, they make a number of statements, but I'll read number four to you. "Better, best cybersecurity practices. Realize that it is not a matter of whether, but when a cyber attack or security breach will occur. Be prepared through training and effective response processes, periodic testing, et cetera, and record keeping." On the second page, they list eight best practices for municipalities. And I won't go through these now, but my question to the two of you is, are you comfortable in asking Andrew to come forward, maybe sometime in the fall or by the end of the calendar year, in answering these eight items? Encryption, control over administrative functions, passwords, blocked access for hackers, cybersecurity staff, et cetera? Are we, are you able to bring forward the extent to which this is happening, and the extent to which, if it's not, what you're maybe thinking of doing to strengthen?
Yes, we've experienced issues and had to respond, so I could get you up to date. I'm not sure how much of it would be available, but I could get you details of what we've done to mitigate.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
You're done?
This yours? Yeah.
Would you like to be excused?
I will. Thank you. Thank you all. Congratulations, sir.
Well, now we got the ones left as the heavy hitters. Now we're going into the town manager's report.
So first, I'd like to have Chief Mercier come up to introduce our new officer.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chief Mercier.
I'd like to first introduce Captain Miller. He's put together this swearing ceremony for our new hire, Tom Hartwell. Tom is from Lisbon, born and raised in Lisbon, has a long history of firefighting. His father is sitting here, Chief Greg Hartwell, Lisbon Fire Department. And we'd like to, tonight, this afternoon, swear Tom in.
Go to it.
Cap? Tom? Want to kiss the camera?
Do I get the order?
Sure.
Do I? I stand your name.
I, Thomas Hartwell.
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Hampshire.
The Constitution of the State of New Hampshire.
And that I, as a member of the Littleton Fire Department?
And I, as a member of the Littleton Fire Department?
That as a member of the Littleton Fire Department, my fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect.
That as a member of the fire department, I swear to serve the...
Sorry, I'm reading a little too fast. Fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect.
The fundamental duty is to serve the people and protect the people I serve.
To safeguard and preserve life.
To safeguard and preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
To maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
To maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust.
I recognize the badge of the office as a symbol of faith and trust.
And I accept so long as I am true.
And I accept so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
And make these promises.
And make these promises.
Solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If you don't mind, I'd like to excuse our partner, Hartwell, and his family to celebrate a celebration we've gathered with them.
It's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You can go, you did so good.
Okay, next is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and Chief Mercier is gonna present some information on that.
Some information?
A little bit.
All 190 pages?
192 pages.
You gonna read it all to us?
Sure.
I've memorized page one.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm here this afternoon to ask for your approval and adoption of our revised 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Previously, several weeks ago, we sent out electronic copies for your review, and we do give a few questions that we answered. This process was a combined effort from many different departments and organizations. I'd like to thank those departments and organizations, those being administration, police department, the highway department, the schools, high school was very much involved in this, finance department, several state agencies, planning zoning was also involved. So it was quite a few people involved in this revision process. This revision process was performed using grant award funding, which offset the costs to once again hire June Darnall, who did an outstanding job in putting this together for us. Her services were invaluable in putting this together. The format changed a little bit because FEMA does change the format on occasion, and they did change some of the format, so we had to adjust our previous plan to meet their requirement. The plan was completed, reviewed, comments were taken. Once we had the final document, we sent the plan out to the state. The process change was it since five years ago, in which the state does a review, approves it, and sends their approval to FEMA. According to the FEMA regulations, our board of selectmen and our town have to adopt the plan to make it legal. And I'm asking you this afternoon if you please consider doing so.
That also requires a vote from us, so we will do that at the end of the meeting, after the public has had an opportunity to comment.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Next up, I just have the year-to-date budget figures. It looks really small on screen.
Some more pages here.
There you go. So just to briefly go over, right now, everything is on point for where it should be for both expenses and revenues. The budget is tight, but we're within where we should be for July.
Yeah, we've reviewed these, and I'm good with them. It doesn't require our adaption, I don't believe. But on the other hand, if there is questions or input from any of the voters, we can address those in the public comment section also.
And I have any thoughts?
Thoughts, Franco?
No, I think I'm good.
Yep. Next up would be the Dog Park Committee. One of the more common requests that we get is the need for a dog park. Select Board considering closing off the athletic fields. You know, I expect that the demand's going to only increase. Went to the last few recreation meetings, and it's something that's on their mind, and they want to work with the Select Board in creating a dog park site selection committee to help really kind of select the site, help find funding, and get the thing rolling. And so, if the Board wishes to do so, I'd like to request that you put it out there that you're going to appoint a dog park committee, maybe at the next meeting, and take the letters of interest.
I would suggest, if you agree, Franco, that we solicit letters of interest for committee members and from that list, and then appoint a committee.
Yeah, I just have a question about how would that committee work in interaction with the Parks and Rec? I mean, are they taking initiative on this, and is it gonna be a sub of Parks and Rec somehow, or?
To be a select and appointed committee, I would hope we would have a representative from Parks and Rec on it.
Yeah, it's really kind of coming out of a request from them, too. You know, it brought this to their attention, and they really wanted the Select Board to create an official, you know, committee that could be more empowered to come up with some...
Well, that's fine, as long as, I just didn't want to have another committee out there, then they're butting heads with someone who is working in another direction, so...
They should be part of it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's good.
Went to the last few recreation meetings, and it's something that's on their mind. They want to work with the Select Board in creating a dog park site selection committee to help really kind of select the site, help find funding, and get the thing rolling. And so if the Board wishes to do so, I'd like to request that you put it out there that you're going to appoint a dog park committee maybe at the next meeting and take letters of interest.
I would suggest, if you agree, Franco, that we solicit letters of interest for committee members from that list, and then appoint a committee.
Yeah, I just have a question about how would that committee work in interaction with the Parks and Rec? I mean, are they taking initiative on this, and is it gonna be a sub of Parks and Rec somehow, or?
To be a select and appointed committee, I would hope we would have a representative from Parks and Rec on it.
Yeah, it's really kind of coming out of a request from them, too. You know, it brought this to their attention, and they really wanted the Select Board to create an official, you know, committee that could be more empowered to come up with some.
Well, that's fine, as long as, I just didn't want to have another committee out there, then they're butting heads with someone who is working in another direction, so.
They should be part of it.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good.
We don't need to take an official action on that until it's time as we appoint it.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
We'll put a notice up on the website, letting people know that they're interested to submit a letter of consideration. Next up is we received a letter that our representative from the Mount Washington Regional Airport has resigned. And so, again, this would be kind of a information for the public to know that if someone is interested in serving, they should submit a letter of interest to the Select Board for the consideration and appointment at a future meeting. But we do have a vacancy on the Regional Airport Board.
So that'll also be on the website, and of course televised tonight's meetings. If you're interested in the Airport Committee, let us know, we'll make an appointment.
I have a question on that. The letter states there's sixty, we have sixty days to appoint someone, and then after that, they can appoint someone. Does that sixty days start on July twenty-third, or when they're referring to what we had already heard? Start as of this letter?
The notice, yeah.
I mean, recognizing we meet once a month, we need to get it done within sixty days.
So we can do it in our first September meeting if we've got applicants.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
We'll be okay. You skipped school town budget.
Oh, school town budget. So I can just give a, or do you want to give us kind of the status? I have just some times that we've got to.
I'd let you do it. You make more money than I do.
Yeah, sure. So Article eight of the School Board warrant. Requested that the town, School Board, Select Board, and Budget Committee do some kind of coordination meetings in order to better coordinate throughout the year on the budget, rather than just during the budget season. In response to that, representatives from each one of those groups have gotten together. And our first meeting was in May fifth, and we really just got together to talk about representation and the purpose of really getting together, what could be accomplished at different meetings. On August seventh, we got together to discuss some areas where we could collaborate. Fuel bid was one example. Another collaboration, which we usually would do anyways, is coordinating our school payments to help with cash flow needs of both the school and the town. And we plan to get together at some point in September and review our potential unreserved fund balance. We won't have final figures at that time, but we can at least have some kind of anticipation discussion. And then also to talk about the MS one and utilities valuation, because that makes up such a large portion or impact on our tax rate. We, last year, we weren't done with our MS one by that time. I don't know if we will be at this time, but at least we can get together and maybe have an idea in the spirit of the article. And then we'll also plan on getting together in January for the, which would be our first quarter of 2018. And there'll be regular full-budget committee meetings starting this fall, which we don't have a date yet, I believe.
We have a September date, don't we?
I think it's, we don't have one exactly set, but maybe just a split.
Okay. Okay, you have anything else under Town Manager's Report?
I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is entitled Other Business, and it is, on the agenda reads the Foster Hill Road Petition. We, the town, actually, I think it was directed to the Selectmen, received a petition from many, if not most, of the residents on Foster Hill Road regarding the condition of the road, and they would like it fixed. Given the fact that we received a petition, we're making it public that we received a petition. Foster Hill Road, for those of you that don't know, I live on also, and I can tell you, it's bad. Given my position here, I did not sign the petition, and my neighbors were nice enough not to ask me to put me in a bad spot. I can also tell you and the petitioners that it's all part of the process. It's gotta be in the budget. It currently is not in the budget. It is, and I'll let Joe speak to it better than I, and I know he has to some, if not most, of you, on the list of one of the worst and will most likely get on the list of the recommended roads for the next budget cycle. If for some reason it does not, your petition is the beginning step of taking it to the next step, if it were not included in a budget, and that would be to make it a warrant article. So your efforts aren't for naught. You certainly brought it to the rest of the town's attention. It was already on the Highway Department's list, if there is one, which there is. But we recognize the fact that it's bad, we recognize that it's. We also know, because it's so bad, it's next to impossible to plow, because it's so uneven. The details of it, I think, stop mumbling and let Joe address it, if you would, Joe. Would you address the condition of Foster Hill for the audience?
Sure. Last year, when we worked with Lieutenant, quickly identified Foster Hill Road as one of the most problematic roads. We call them out-of-town roads, we have in-town roads, central to the center, and then out-of-town roads, such as Foster Hill Road. I felt that the criteria, easily that the criteria to be put on the list to be rebuilt and repaired right away. It's difficult, it's long, it's difficult to plow, so with wind maintenance being so problematic. And if there is a bus crew on part of it, on a portion of it, I put this to the top of my list. When the dam bit, became devalued and our tax rate was impacted, this road and other roads were taken off that list, and we went with a smaller, simpler fix, which would be a modest, useless road out by the town line, which is similar condition to Foster Hill Road. It's more heavily traveled, for sure, than Foster Hill Road. It's still at the top of our list, we can't plow it. We can't plow it, I can't plow it safely with my truck. A pickup truck is too aggressive of a device for that road. Only plow with bigger trucks with different types of plows on them, and it lie over a little bit more. But that all said, when we, last fall, we brush cut the road with a rented mower, not a regular mower. You see, it was out there last week. And like an eighteen-foot reach, and we tried to cut the brush way back for a reason, because I need to get at the ditch lines to do some repairs. Before we repave anywhere, we have to look at the, you know, what's underneath it, sewer, there's no sewer there. Water, there's no water there either, but there is drainage. So seeing this, putting this on the radar, the enhanced ditching, brush cutting we did last year was all part of that. That was done, we did do some pot-holing last fall, there as well, extra pot-holing, when I saw it couldn't get on the list. And we also did some surveying engineering at the end of the road, determine our right of ways and where things are, where we have the rights to ditch and work and not ditch and not work. So it looks, when you drive out that road, as if there's not much going on, but it's actually got pretty high level of service and dollars spent out there in the last year. Going forward into this year, it was one of the first roads that was swept, first roads that was pot-holed. And then now it's receiving the second round of pot-holing right now. Maybe we saw the guy out there Friday for a little bit, and today, you know, some goddamn cutting. So we're doing what we can within the constraints of our budget, and I agree with the consensus of that. I didn't see the petition, but I agree that I can't plow with my pickup truck, and that's a problem. And we'd like to see it fixed. What are we talking about? We're talking about, come on, put my glasses on for a second. Quarter million dollars just in asphalt alone. That's with no ditching, no gravel, no tree work. Nothing, just binder and top coat. About quarter million dollars, that's a good price for right now, if anybody has the money and wants to do it, we hope. But it's an active price for the season, quarter million dollars in asphalt. We did some test pits out there already, and it's not quite ready for just that quarter million dollars in asphalt. We would need a minimum of sixty thousand dollars in gravel underneath it. So now you're north of three hundred, and you haven't put a drain pipe in yet. Like, again, this is on the radar, we've got some work, we've done some work, looking at what this is gonna be to put it together to be on a warrant article, that's the way we want to go. This is what I've done, these are roughly the numbers we're at right now, I guess cutting it short so you guys can bum it.
Well, we got a number of neighbors here, so when we get to public comment section, we'll certainly give them an opportunity to speak, but I will add to Joe's comments that it would be in the recommended list of things to do for the budget. Whether the Budget Committee carries it forward and so forth is unknown. Logic tells me they will, but I can't promise that. So you always have a warrant article option to go if it doesn't get included in the budget. Frankly, I can't imagine it not being included in the budget, but I can't promise it either. So thank you for your remarks, Joe, and I'm gonna give all you folks from Foster Hill a chance to speak in a minute when we get to the public comment section. Next on the agenda is All Business, and the agenda reads Bruce Hadlock, July tenth information request. At our last meeting, which was July tenth, Bruce asked for the abatement list request, we put that together, Seal has it for you, Bruce?
I already picked it up.
You already got it, thank you. Bruce also made some remarks about potential illegal Selectmen's meetings regarding the LIDC land transfer. We went back and found the hearings and the minutes from 2014, and they were all done legally. The question was me being a part of it because I have an alleged conflict of interest. I was not a Selectman in 2014, I was not a part of those meetings or hearings, there's no illegal action. The third thing was the transfer of land for a dollar. Was there any record of that having taken place? We found not the actual transfer prices, but we found the tax stamps that were, with a whole list of transfers that Seal also has, that show the minimum of a twenty-dollar tax fee. That applies for any transfer under four thousand dollars. Whether it was three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars or one dollar, we can't tell. But we know it was a twenty-dollar fee, so it was under four thousand. Next item is New Business, which is Safety, Security, Traffic Flow, Main Cottage and Mill Streets. I believe that is a presentation by you, Joe.
Just a quick presentation on chat about what we did on Mill Street in the downtown area with, regarding parking and traffic, pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic for last year or so. Last August, Town Manager really brought to my attention that free parking is really in tough shape. And I agree it needed some care, extra attention, and we had, we incorporated a regular maintenance routine with our free parking lots. We did some hazard tree removal at some of the lots. Actually, a tree came down right through a car right before, right early last summer. It was obvious that we needed some work to be done, and I pointed that out. Sweeping more regularly, cutting the brush back, and then regular maintenance of the lots. We worked with Paul, Chief Smith, he looked at some lighting concerns, tried to increase lighting, make sure lights would be changed around, things like that, cutting some brush here and there to increase safety or the feeling of safety when you pulled in, and the feeling of a maintained lot as you, encourage you to decide using these satellite lots, if you will, off of Main Street. The signage was addressed, you know, you can see them, they're all new signs there. Can't quite see them from Main Street sometimes, so we added a different sign on Main Street, that you can look for other concerns. Then we did put another sign that's not on here, on Light Pole by the top of the town, it would be this, that would show an arrow going up, up Main Street, I'm sorry, Pleasant Street, to these two lots. One at the lot behind the laundromat on Miss Oklahoma, we call it, or one behind Jack's Junior. So we thought that was a good first step in trying to get people to get off Main Street and utilize some of our lots, get some of the congestion off the road, and increase safety for everybody concerned. After that, after we got through the signage really, we started looking at some of the, on crosswalks, and we tied in the free parking at the laundromat on Pleasant Street to Cottage Street shops. We added this green in here for the Lane House, a side note. And so if you utilize the free parking on Pleasant Street at the laundromat, you come down the stairs and you'd see there's plenty of ways to get to the shops on Cottage Street, or to the Opera House, or, you know, to go to the right towards Main Street. So again, trying to encourage people to decide using some of these parking lots, and then keep them safe as they do it. This was a, this looks like a small job, but it was a little bit of a collaboration with the state DOT. Guys coming in off hours, Littleton Police, helping us out with traffic, you know, painted these as a weather sign to turn. Cold pink, doesn't wanna dry. I think it's an improvement there, it's been pretty well received, and that's been another step. From the crosswalk painting, we kind of went into some sewer issues on Mill Street. And there's, again, the reason why we mentioned this with balancing life and safe and growth down there. We can't do much, so busy down there in the summertime, since last year, we had to fall and some of our maintenance there. After that, over the winter, we started looking at, you know, requests about Chief Smith, again, to make the parking lots feel, be more safe, more attractive, and enhance the natural beauty of the area. And we did some tree cutting down there. The chief wanted to see, have these lights better exposed. You can see this side of the limit we cut that was blocking the lights there. The illumination was definitely increased through just some hard work, and, you know, really no money spent, just our labor. And again, the natural beauty comes out of the area as you do these things, so it's a win-win. The people who are, have to use the lot, they're off to stay out of Main Street, maybe use these. Feel a little safer when I get out there, the police can see and patrol and do much, do their, their job. We took it one more step further to the other side of the river at the chief and the captain's request, and I concurred, the river walk on the other side, there's no pitches here, try to cut the brush back along the river, too. We encourage people, we love the covered bridges, and keep that clear as well for sightline improvement. Now, the final, where we are now, not the final chapter, where we are now, you know, this is Mill Street now, and you can see, you know, this isn't safe for a pedestrian with a truck trying to come through, and the cars there. This is before the shillings construction began. So we had Person's Concrete, everything's been kind of done here as cheaply as we can. Person's Concrete donated these blocks, and we came in early one morning, and we put these these blocks in a manner that will give you just an armored, protected walkway, pedestrian walkway down through there. And it's worked well. Once the blocks were set, we tied some crosswalks to it. We have those pictures of crosswalks. Well, there's a crosswalk here, yes, and you see some people that were using it. We tied crosswalks to it and invited people in through painting, a little sidewalk painting and a crosswalk installation. We added two, one from Porter Street, that goes diagonally over to Mill Street, and then one down below, if you would use the covered bridge, would come across as a sidewalk, the crosswalk there that lets you in or invites you in there as well. And again, the blocks were donated, and then the signage we had was donated as well. Now, when you come down on Bill Porter Street. Now when you come down on Bill, Porter Street towards the shillings and Miller's Fair, there's a sign that says sidewalk to Bill Street shops with an arrow, you know, and no stopping to try to keep the traffic moving through there. So this just is a little bit of a summary of what we've done the last year to try to keep things moving in Ma- Main Street. We're lucky that we have a busy Main Street, you know, I think a lot of towns are envious of our Main, I know a lot how they're envious of our Main Street and the, with a little bit of work like this and some good, good collaborative efforts from, from the department heads and from local businesses, you know, we got a lot done here, a little, we really did. The only thing you see in this picture we bought is we bought those two by fours and I screwed them on. And those are just, those are purchased so that maybe the merchants could advertise their shops to help them during this busy season and the little bit of construction that's going on down there. Other than that, it was like they donated and all our accountable work. And the amount of work we spent was on, that was a half a day on Fridays to put those blocks in and with brush cutting was in around snowstorms where we had some downtime on Mill Street and on the river. So like I said, we're trying to allow a little down there and, and the pop free parking as well and keep things for people safe. That's pretty much what I have. Any questions, sir?
Thank you, Joe. So we've got nothing else?
Nothing else.
So now we get to the favorite portion, public comment. The floor is open on any subject. I would request that people that are here to speak on agenda items be given the opportunity to go first, but you don't have to. I'm going to try to call on them. George.
George Morgan, I live on six fifteen Foster Hill Road. I was one of the petition signers. And for those people that aren't familiar with Foster Hill Road, it's about a two mile long road, dead end, couple farms on the road. It's a stepped hill, Foster Hill. The road is severely crowned in the middle and is dished on the other side on the travel lanes and then flared on the ends, upflared on the ends. So it makes for pretty hazardous driving to start with because kind of hard to hold the road, particularly when it's icy and snowy. And as they've said, it's very difficult to plow because of these hollows that are in the road. I myself have slid off the road just below my house into a trench. So it's a, it's a hazard. It's a hazard for residents, it's a hazard for any traffic that has to move up and down that road, particularly in winter. As far as the patching goes, you know, kudos to the road department for the work they try to do, but it's, it's almost useless effort. I mean, the towns spend money to fix the holes, but not long after they fix the holes, the holes are back. But one of the problems is that because it is so severely crowned and you have almost like drainage ditches in the road, never mind the drainage ditches on the side, the water runs down the road, it pulls up the coal patch, as soon as it gets cold, the coal patch lifts, as soon as the plows come through, you know, in the winter, it pulls the coal patch out. So it seems like we're, not only are we spending a lot of money to maintain a road that is really not very maintainable, but it's a hazard. It's a hazard for us as a resident. I understand that we are dead end road and it's not a high traffic road, but it's also a road that carries heavy equipment. And so heavy equipment might be going across the road. We have a substation on that road and so they're constantly in there doing work. Not long ago, they moved a big transformer in there and they're still doing a lot of work in there. So it's constant, flatbeds coming in with huge pieces of equipment that are just making even a bad situation even worse. So I just appeal to the town that, you know, take them with consideration, all the problems that we as residents have to deal with up there. I don't even know if the fire department has any issues with getting up and down that road, but it's that bad. So please, you know, take my comments and consideration and consider redoing that road. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else?
I'll say a few words. Andy Cobb, eight seven one Foster Hill Road. And maybe was in there, but I didn't quite hear enough about the safety issues. George talked about some of the hazards and such, but there are three distinct things I thought about that I wanted to make sure I heard in the meeting on top of things. There are two explicit areas on that hill where there is a uplift due to rocks or whatever underneath the road. And if you've ever driven down there and another car's coming, you have to go where your tires hit that, it actually would bounce your car up lots and you lose traction even at the posted speed limit. And that's not safe. Now, in the winter, when you hit those bumps, your car starts to go over. You're only doing twenty-five miles an hour, thirty miles an hour. So there are two very distinct areas. There's another area which is about halfway up where there seems to be a flat before you start the next area up. And for all the good work that the holes have been filled, that area is sandy and underneath it, the sand is actually filling the holes. Anytime it rains, those holes become massive puddles and more washes out and those are a hazard too because driving through there is, you have to bob and weave to go through without destroying your car. The last thing is a safety issue. I ride bicycle a lot and I don't go racing down the hill and all that, but besides all the potholes and everything, there are very large openings that crisscross the road, if you've ever seen them. They're several inches deep and several inches wide. And if you ever ridden a bicycle across that, you're, you're in for a shock if you ever catch your tire into that. Well, they're all diagonal and everything, so I have to weave just to ride on the road and I don't think anybody would say, well, you shouldn't ride in five. But if a car's coming, you have to go off to the side and pull off or do this or that and it's just not safe for me or anybody else that rides a bicycle on a road like that because of these other bruises, which are very hard to fix with, you know, fillers and things like that. So I just wanted to bring up some additional points of safety hazards on the road that we face every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Bruce?
Is that a class five highway?
Joe?
I'm not sure the status of that road, Lucy, is it a class five or not?
Let me explain to me. The state of New Hampshire pays the town if you get class five highways, class fours, different ones. So the town receives remuneration from the state of New Hampshire to take care of and maintaining a lot of your rural roads. This is something that you should know and you should be able to find out and you can find out how much money is actually going in here for the town to take care of and maintain it, that's number one. Second thing is that the, the first part of that road has Littleton Water and Light and Littleton Water and Light spends approximately sixty thousand dollars a year out of their budget for cutting back the roads as such on the thing. Not just here, but the majority of your road, just beyond, I think it's Rogers House, is all on New Hampshire Co-op. And you ought to go to New Hampshire Co-op and seeing if there's money available out of it for the cutting back and all that thing on it because they have the monies to be able to do it as well. And Co-op in turn is a place where you can get money to do some of the cutting back as far as the roads are concerned because again, it's not Littleton Water and Light that's up there on the thing. But only the first part of it is Littleton Water and Light, the rest of it is Co-op. A Co-op might have some money to be able to at least do the cutting part of the thing.
So Bruce, we emailed the state of New Hampshire when you brought this up last week, of whose road is it, class five or not? And I'm waiting for responses on it. It's a, it's a good point Bruce brings up. I believe it's our road and we talked about old white, we talked about a few things and I believe, I believe those are our roads and if I'm wrong, I'll let you know. And I have sent off, well, to the state, their clarification on a few things together.
Thank you.
I think that was an old county road originally that went up over there, Spire and South Park.
Right.
It was the real, original county road that went through there, Spire and South Park.
Anyone else?
On the dog ordinance, have fines been determined or violations, first and second?
It's in the, yeah.
It's provided for in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five dollars for the first, a hundred for the second, first born for the third. Something like that.
Yeah, it's, there's provisions in the ordinance. I suppose we have to look them up.
Yeah, here it is. Any person found violation of section will forfeit twenty-five dollars for the first dissent offense, a hundred for the second offense.
If, if payment is not made to the town clerk within ninety-six hours after notice of forfeiture, a complaint will be filed with the district court. So it's a graduated penalty section. Any person who is notified under this chapter of a civil forfeiture two times within a twelve month period may not utilize the forfeiture process for subsequent offenses within that twelve month period. Instead, such subsequent offenses shall be filed directly with the court.
In regard to the sign cost, you guys are going to raise the dog license fee to pay for the sign or you want the tax paid to pay?
Raising the dog license fees is not in the ordinance.
It's established.
Pardon?
I think it's established by state law, the amounts.
Who's going to pay for the sign? We are, right? Tax paid, right?
Right.
Even if you have a dog, right?
Right. It's not in the ordinance. Nothing for the fees. The fees we think are set by the state anyway. Next.
Are you planning on putting up any, I don't know what to call them, dog waste stations? They usually have the bags that people can use as well as it's, I call it the more of a healthy place to put the remains and throwing them in a fifty-five gallon drum. Other communities, Wolfwood, Burlington, they're putting them in, people use them. And it's, other than someone, yeah, they pick it up and then they ditch it off to the side.
One of the recommendations was to add more of those downtown.
Right, we do have some, but they're, right.
We have some and we'll, we'll throw that weighty question under the new committee.
Yeah, I know, everything costs money, so.
Sure does.
Yeah.
And we have some people that don't want to suspend it.
Well, there's a lot of money. When I was on the Parks and Rec Board, we started looking into this, there's a lot of money that's available from the dog companies and everything from dog show. The great money out there for pets is massive. You just have to apply for it.
Well, we'll let our new committee work on that.
I also want to encourage the town manager, from now on, when they have a school town budget meeting, it wouldn't be possible because a budget, even if it's in the beginning, that they tried to resolve, you know, the cost of, or the, to lower the budget over the school and stuff like that. I delivered a, you know, the taxation getting involved, if they don't know, you know, I, I found out about the meeting last week, somebody told me, otherwise I don't know, you know, it's no, no big deal to post, you know, a meeting. The people want to go, they go, but in the other hand, you know, that they have to, they talk about it kind of, you know, not resolving nothing. I even sent, I sent a request to the chairman, to Steve Kelly, to post something, you know, and that.
The, the meeting you're referring to did not include the select board, it only included me. It did not include the school board, it only included the chairman and it only included Mr. Kelly from the budget committee. That's why it wasn't noticed. It was meant to plan the future meetings. When we have the future meetings, if all those entities are included, they have to be noticed. And if they have to be noted, they will be. Ralph?
Okay, on the, on the same note as that one there, because one of my questions, is that, that's going to be a public meeting, even though it doesn't include the full board, it's a public meeting, correct? These, these meetings with the school board and the, that you're having right now for the quarterly meetings?
Good question.
Are they public meetings? And if they are, you just had one, you did have one to discuss items on the budget, budgetary items, but it was never advertised.
Because it wasn't considered a public meeting.
That's what I said. They're not public meetings?
When it don't include the whole board, the select board, the school board and the budget committee, that's not a public meeting.
Maybe more administrative in function without.
We only had one selectman. We only have one school board member.
Well, actually, I heard there was two school board members or three, no, three school board members and two from the town committee, town budget committee.
Town budget committee is an appointed committee. There were two members.
Right.
There was only one school person there.
Okay, but that was not.
There was one selectman there.
And that was not a public meeting because it did not involve public information?
No quorum.
Didn't include, it didn't involve a quorum of the entities.
Okay, but if it moves forward, is it going to be public or not?
It's a good question, but I'm afraid it may have to be.
Okay, and if it is, then it has to be advertised on your website.
Then it has to, then it has to be noticed.
That was one question. The second question I had was, on nonprofit agencies buying in the town of, town of Littleton, when a nonprofit agency buys land in Littleton, do they have to apply to the select board for a non-taxable status? Are they automatically non-taxable, like a church? And while I'm getting to this, is the church is moving into the old salmon building, salmon crust building? That right now, the, there's, business taxes being received on that, property taxes being received on that building, but as soon as the church moves in, it now becomes a non-taxable entity? Or do they have to apply to somebody in the town and somebody in the town decides whether or not that's non-taxable? How can that work?
My, my recollection is that there's a state governed list of who's taxable or not, but I might be wrong.
So there's some entities that would have to file a charitable exemption status and there's some that are granted charitable exemption by the statute just in general. For example, education entities are automatically granted under a separate state law and religious entities, I'm not sure if they have to annually file the charitable paperwork, I have to look at, but I think it might be set aside in, in state law. Also the use, so for example, let's say that a religious organization owns a building, but then the use inside of the building isn't specifically either charitable or religious or educational, then some portion of that building could actually become taxable.
Okay, but then?
But we won't know until we, we actually can determine that once, once something's actually finally in there. But as of right now, it's taxable, it is taxable.
It's a taxable building, but if the church moves in and they run church functions in, it's going to be non-taxable. The same as the Hitzman Building. Right now, it's taxable, but if the community college takes that over, the death of property becomes non-taxable.
No, we've got along the same point. You know, there, it depends on the function of the space. For example, you know, the hospital is something that we looked at a couple of years ago where we have, you look at the actual charitable status versus business activities that are existing in there and look at ratios of that. Same thing with the school, like, you know, there might be, say, classroom space and, you know, different uses that are throughout there, whether it be a food court or something like that. It's all speculation right now, but that's where you would work together with one of those entities to try to develop a payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, and who does that? Your partner or the?
That would be the board of assessors, which is the select board.
Because I just, you know, there's, there's three different things now that have happened in just the last couple of months that means non-taxable entities coming into our town that really is going to hurt our tax base if we allow too many non-taxable entities into the town.
Well, not all, not all of them choose to do that either. A good, best example of not choosing to do that is the Littleton or the Palmer Golda Learning Center on Union Street. That's educational and when LIDC did that fifteen plus years ago, they chose to remain a taxpayer because they didn't want to hurt the town.
I also think, I, I, I understand your comment and I respect that because I've seen areas where they're, they've just become too heavy with non-taxable problems. where they've just become too heavy with non-taxable properties.
Berlin, New Hampshire now is that way.
But I think it's important for us to also think about what the benefits of a certain entity coming in might be. So, and you gotta weigh that against the tax, the loss in tax revenue, potential loss in tax revenue. As you said earlier, I mean, it's all speculation right now, but I think on a case-by-case basis, you gotta, you gotta weigh those things and make a, you know, your best decision you can based on that. As far as your question, can you stop it? I don't think there's any way to really stop it, other than to try to throw up whatever roadblocks you can try to throw up. But as far as legal remedies to stop it, that might be tough. I don't pretend to be an expert on it, but I...
When the governor was here a couple of months ago, he told us that White Mountain Community College deal at Hitzner is off. They went to the governor and said, we need $40 million, whatever it was. And it came to the wrong place. Will something else develop with more collaboration from different entities? Yeah, but the taxpayers, the state of New Hampshire aren't...
Right. I'm just concerned that we don't become a lot of non-taxable entities. It will be the Berlin that got themselves into that area, where a lot of Berlin now is non-taxable land and property.
Yeah, I think...
So I just wanna make sure that, I just kinda curious how that process works.
I think we can keep an eye on it, and we're not quite the dire straits of Berlin's at this point in time. Bruce?
One of the things you've gotta be concerned about is anybody that commercial property, such as the Hitzner property, they can file for a different tax way of doing it based upon the amount of revenue that comes in. And if so, your property taxes in turn can take a substantial decrease on any commercial piece of property because they're not generating any revenues. That's something you have to be very concerned about too.
Yeah.
On the thing out, so you just, it can work both ways on that. The other, the old shoe factory on the Redwood Street, that used to be commercial. It's now zone residential. Okay? And some of those things can make references as to what you can do with them and what you can't do with them too, as far as changing the zoning ordinances, as far as that.
Anyone else?
I have one question for the town manager. Do you mind to explain to me, are you personally, I, people to come to work for Littleton, town Hall? What are you gonna do, post them? You, you know, you put them in a paper, you send, you know, you send the boss for that particular entity, like the hotel or fire department or anybody else, to look for people and stuff like that? And the reason I ask is, I know I'm, you know, wrong in that. The last three people that they applied for jobs in Littleton, they are not from Littleton. They are not. I, you know, one time, before Seymour, right, you know, gave you a job, I asked him a question. I said, "Is this possible?" Littleton everybody's so stupid, they can't get a job as a town manager. She not answer me. Now, I ask you a question, it's, "Is this possible that you cannot find people?" Believe it or not, I went to the employment office, and now I got somebody, you know, writing me later. I wanna know how many people there are in the employment office from Littleton. And, you know, just to see if the people in Littleton, I mean, you know, I talk with a lot of people. To me, they're all intelligent people, I mean, you know, it's a... You know, but I don't understand why so far it allows the three, four jobs to that.
I can answer part of that. When we were looking for a town manager, nobody from Littleton applied.
Maybe they're not priced hard enough.
No one from Littleton applied. It's hard to hire from Littleton when no one applied.
Yeah, that's why she not answer me probably.
And then we got, then we got lucky and got Andrew.
Oh, yeah, very lucky. Oh, yeah. And you got him on your, your wish.
Andrew grew up law in Littleton, and he didn't. Okay? So when he speaks, he's got a good permission to speak to anybody in there, because he's not a resident.
So I could just answer his question.
Yeah, just the way you...
So we have to hire according to our personnel policy, and it requires that we advertise...
I know the laws.
Yeah, so we usually advertise in the newspaper, local newspapers. We advertise on New Hampshire Municipal Association. We'll even have, they'll even push it out to other municipal associations. And, you know, we'll post it on the website. I don't know if we have other places that we also do word of mouth. And I know we've hired a couple of people recently. I think we hired two Littleton, our last two hires were actually Littleton residents. But really, it's all about the pool and the qualifications and the requirements of positions. So there are some positions that require someone live within a certain distance or a certain timeframe from the place, but we can't discriminate beyond that.
No, no, no. I know the laws.
But those last two we've hired most recently aren't...
The last two for the highway of, of...
Parks and Rec in New Hampshire.
Parks for Highway District.
Bruce, I think you had another question. Are you done, Rudy?
Yes, thank you.
My other question is, I'm still asking the question relative to your meeting with the outcome. Have you set it?
It's scheduled for tomorrow at 11 o'clock and just got canceled.
Yeah. Why did it get canceled?
Because somebody's father-in-law had a heart attack or something.
Mine's related to Parks and Rec, I mean, well, the Parks and Rec Commission. I may be based towards Joe, but I'm not quite sure. Due to the recent, I guess you'd say, lack of employees, just wanted to bring to the attention that when Mike Spalding was there, prior to his coming on, the fields were absolutely horrendous condition. And giving him a pat on the back over the time period he was in there, he did an outstanding job bringing the fields up to the condition that they're in today, costing what would normally be a massive amount of money. He did a great job not spending as much, but it still cost a lot to keep them up. One of the key things that he did was he kept people off the fields when they should not be playing on. And I'll give an example. You have a big rainstorm, and you tell, you know, they're not allowed to practice athletics on the fields because they weren't in good condition. We, when I was on the Parks Commission, we gave him the authority to do it, but we backed him up, and he met with us regularly. I'm urging, whether it's Joe, whoever's gonna be in charge, to, one, keep in track of the conditions, the pH levels of the soil, the grass, all this. This, if not within, and I'm not kidding, within two to three years, people have nothing but dirt piles. And it will cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring them back. And, I mean, we have had people for the last 20 years, they come here from all over the country, and the one thing that they say at all of our recreational fields is they cannot believe on what good quality and condition they are. And it was just for simple maintenance, whether it's putting down fertilizer. And I don't know what Mike did as far as the fertilizer, the pH levels and all this with the watering and stuff. He, I think, took lies on it, but it's something that should be passed along, if not in the long run. One, again, we're gonna be playing on dirt piles again, because that's what was there before. So...
Thank you.
I've said it, but yeah. And I don't tell you where, I have a clue on where to tell you to go.
Thank you.
Education, so.
Anyone else? Okay. We're moving to board action. I believe we have two actions to take or not. The first of which is the dog ordinance.
With the public hearings, you want to accept, authorize, accept it and expend for the grant aid monies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want me to back up now?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just making a motion for those.
So, dog ordinance is off. We need to go back to the public hearings and put all that paperwork away. First one was the 151,004 roads. That was, that was the one, the grant from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion to accept that?
You have to actually accept that, those funds?
Yeah, because they're outside of the budget cycle, so you would want to make the motion to accept and expend.
So I'll make a motion to accept and expend the 151,304 dollars and 77 cents.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor? Aye. The second hearing was the, to accept and expend the $17,000 to the United States Department of Agriculture for the Community Facility Grant ATV Public Safety. Do I have a motion to accept that?
We gotta get to discussion stage. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second, is there a discussion?
Yeah, my question is, if we, I understand that the balance is gonna be paid through another grant. So can we make this motion contingent on getting that other grant? Or if we make this motion and don't make a contingent on that, then are we forced to cover the rest of that money?
That's a good question.
Which I'm not against anyways, but I can hear the Indians.
We, all right, so if you accept it without a grant or a follow-up...
I think that if you make the motion and shoehorn yourself into acceptance of the grant, and there is, and we find or have another funding gravity to offset that portion, we won't be able to act on it. Is that correct?
No, I would say, yeah. So you would just accept without tying it to, in case we have a savings or another revenue from another source.
Yeah.
And what we're doing a lot of this...
You understand?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We're leveraging a lot of grant monies, even sometimes off of others. And so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're okay with the motion as it was?
I've got nothing else to say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's carry it. Now we're back to the dog ordinance. Is there a motion to accept the dog ordinance as presented?
Aye, so moved.
Second, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, is the hazard mitigation plan that Chief Mercy Eric presented to us, is there a motion to accept that?
What are we actually accepting? Do we have to accept the plan, or are we accepting? I don't know how to make the motion.
So you...
We are...
To accept, adopt.
Accepting the, the plan, the 2017 plan.
Okay, so I make a motion that we accept and adopt it.
Second, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anything else to come before the meeting? We're adjourned. Thank you.